Yes, thank you Mayor and Council. Tonight we've got several members of the DOT and their consulting team with us here to give you a presentation on the status of the Jackson Oregon Street Bridge project of note April 4th. There will be a virtual public informational meeting hosted by the Department of Transportation. There will be more information going out in this Friday's City Manager Newsletter as well as I would anticipate next Friday's Newsletter, they'll replay the article again just to try to help get that word out. We'll work with media services to push some social media coverage for that public informational meeting as well, just so people are aware of it and can tune in. With that, I'll turn it over to Bill Bertrand. He's the Project Manager for the DOT for everything Winnebago County, and I will let Bill introduce the rest of his team.
Thank you, James. Thank you for the opportunity for us to come here today for the council workshop. Tammy Rabies, a Project Development Supervisor for the DOT for Winnebago and Outagamy Counties, with here tonight. And then from our consultant team, we have Rob Moses, Project Manager for HDR, and Kathy Beesman, also from HDR. And then they have teamed with Kapor Associates, and we have Justin Arntz and Lindsay Schmidt here this evening from Kapor Associates. So, great team together, and we actually have been working on this project for a number of years now. Took a little break in the middle, but we can get into that as we go through the PowerPoint, so.
We had your bill at the time when this started out.
Yes. Yes. So, the study actually dates back to 2012. There was an inspection done on the bridge that showed a number of issues that needed to be addressed. We then looked at getting a consultant on board. We began the study with HDR in 2015, included a number of stakeholder early meetings at that time. So, we're looking at Oregon-Jackson Street Bridge, downtown Oshkosh, and then we don't have to get too in-depth on location, but nestled in between Highway 44 Bridge to the west and Main Street or Highway 45 to the east. The existing bridge was built in 1956 and is nearing its service life at this point. Typically, we look about 75 years for service life, so we're getting very close to that timeframe. We did begin, as I said, back in 2015 with the study. On the right side of the slide, you can see we did hold a number of early stakeholder advisory meetings and had two local official and public meetings back in the 2016 timeframe. A number of critical local issues that were identified back in 2016, we kind of grouped them into four areas, looked at a need for improving bicycle and pedestrian accommodations on the existing bridge. With the new bridge, typically we look at six-foot sidewalk width being standard. The existing bridge has five-foot width on the approach spans and less than that across the bascule spans. So, if we look at a new bridge alternative, we'd be looking at not only six-foot sidewalks, but also five-foot bicycle lanes that would be added to the existing cross-section across the bridge. Boating clearance or navigation clearance was another issue that was identified. The existing clearance is eight to nine feet. The Wisconsin Street Bridge to the west has a little more than two feet additional clearance than what we currently have at Oregon-Jackson, and dating back to 2015, I think we had counted 400 more openings of Oregon-Jackson Street compared to the Wisconsin Street Bridge to the east. So, again, the replacement alternatives allow additional navigation clearance to be attained. Accommodating the Riverwalk, currently, as you know, the Riverwalk on both shores crosses at grade with existing roadway, so it's a mid-block crossing for pedestrians, and certainly it's a safety issue in any situation out there. And then the last thing that was identified in the last group was really trying to minimize impact to development on both shores, both existing and proposed development that could So, getting, and I'm trying to kind of get through this so there's enough time for question and answer, so what we've got are ten improvement alternatives, and we'll give a very brief summary of each of them. The alternatives range from a do-nothing, which is basically the alternative that we use as a comparison against any of the other alternatives, for rehabilitation option, and then there's eight different replacement options. Four of those are high-level fixed bridge or pre-stressed concrete girders, and then four of those will be similar to what exists today with a lift span in the middle of the bridge. And again, I won't spend too much time on Alternative A, except to say that it is the no-build, and within our environmental document, we use that to compare any of the build alternatives against. So, Alternative B is looking at a rehabilitation of the existing bridge that would address the structural deficiencies that exist today, but it does not have any change to the existing bridge features. So, the elements that we talked about that were identified with the stakeholder group with respect to the bike and pads, the navigation clearance, the Riverwalk, that would not be addressed with the rehabilitation option. We would be looking at about a 25-year life expectancy, plus or minus, again, from the rehabilitation option. And the one thing I will mention on this, and we'll get into it in a slide a little later, but under this option, the DOT would maintain ownership of the existing bridge after the construction project is complete, and that will differ from the other options that we'll be discussing going forward. The replacement alternatives, and again, there's eight of them that we will walk through, or several things that all the replacement alternatives have in common with each other. They will all be looking at a 4% grade on the approach roadway on either side going up to the middle or the navigation channel. The existing bridge has 4.8%, so it'd be a significant improvement certainly over what exists today with respect to the percent grade. All of the replacement options do allow, again, we mentioned improvements for bikes and pads, a five-foot bike lane and six-foot sidewalks. We would also have four 11-foot travelings across a new bridge. Navigation clearance, we'd be looking at a minimum of a 2.2-feet improvement on that to make it consistent with Wisconsin Street. Some of the options have more than that, and we'll get into that as we go through them, but at a minimum, they all have 2.2-feet improved navigation clearance. And then accommodating the Riverwalk, seven of the eight replacement alternatives do allow for the Riverwalk to be grade-separated underneath Oregon-Jackson Street, so there will not be any more at-grade crossing for any users of the trail. And then the last to mention is that, under any of the replacement options, the city of Oshkosh would assume ownership of the bridge after construction is complete. And again, there's a slide that will touch on that in a little more detail later on. With Alternative C1, this is what we call our on-alignment, high-level fixed span option. We are looking at a 23-foot navigation clearance in the center navigation channel for the river. That channel, or, excuse me, that clearance was discussed with the Coast Guard, and tentatively they have agreed that that's a reasonable clearance to look at for a high-level fixed bridge option. On the south side, our construction limits and touchdown limits would be north of 6Ave. On the north side, the touchdown limits would actually extend just to the north side of Marion Road. The one thing this option has is it does realign and include a realignment of Division Street to form a new intersection with Marion Road, and as you can see, the access to Beckett's and the parking structure is served via a cul-de-sac that comes in off of Division Street. So, there would be short driveway stubs off of the cul-de-sac to go to Beckett's, and then also tying in with the parking ramp.
What would the grade happen? What would happen to the grade with the ramp there, because it's pretty steep there already?
Correct. In looking at it, we would meet in with the ramp where it shows on there in the different color, so we're tying in slightly above grade on it, but much closer to existing grade than what you'll see with the option, the next option that we're looking at.
But it's an acceptable?
Yes.
Was Chris on the committee, the stakeholder committee, back in October?
Both Chris Larson and Jim Larson were on the local stakeholder group.
Yes.
They're aware.
They've seen this, and this option was actually one that was present back in 2016-17 timeframe, so this is not a new alternative. This is one that's carried forward.
I want to make sure they were still.
Yep. And this option does include acquisition of the existing chamber building with the realignment of Division Street. Alternative C3 is the next one we'll look at, and this is really very similar to the previous alternative, identical on the south side, really. The difference is how we're treating access to Beckett's and the parking ramp. In this alternative, we do provide direct access from Jackson Street, lining up with where the ramp goes into the parking structure. What this two-dimensional, really pictured, doesn't show is that the point where that driveway's connecting into Jackson Street is between seven and seven-and-a-half feet above existing ground. So, what we would have along both the drive going to the parking ramp and also the offshoot that goes to Beckett is some type of retaining wall on both sides, so it'll be anywhere from seven-and-a-half feet, probably a little sag, maybe be close to six feet above ground where the driveway branches off to Beckett's, and then over about 120, 130 feet, you would see it go back down to existing grade where it comes down into the Beckett's parking area. It does show some lost parking, certainly along the east edge of Jackson Street for Beckett's with that. But again, it, this one is probably tough to visualize. It does not look very obtrusive from a two-dimensional view, but just understand that there's a lot of retaining walls that would be constructed along each of those drives. And it also does maintain, along the north side of the parking ramp, the egress only for Beckett's would come out to Jack, or come out to Division Street, similar to what it does today. Alternate E, this is another carryover alternative from the previous, or the earlier study before it was suspended. We looked at this one raising the navigation clearance to 2.2 feet to make it very close to Wisconsin Street. This would be a bascule bridge replacement, so the center span would open and close. The one thing this option does not capture is we would still have to cross at-grade with the Riverwalk on this option. So, with only raising it 2.2 feet, we don't get a full separation on the Riverwalk, and this is the only option of the eight replacement options that does not provide for the Riverwalk Alternative F, again, going through, and this is very similar to E, in that, again, the south construction limits, you can see, are about halfway between 6th and the river. The north construction limits, just south of Division and Jackson intersection. So, under E and F, both of these options do not involve any reconstruction of the Division Street or the Marion Road intersections with Jackson. Alternative F does provide an additional foot of clearance on the navigation channel that also allows us to grade-separate the Riverwalks underneath of Oregon-Jackson Street. So, again, very similar to E, but I didn't spend a lot of time on E, but F is one that does provide for the separation for the Riverwalks. We do have to shift Beckett's driveway to the north on this option, very close to the parking ramp entrance, and actually, there's a little offshoot from that parking ramp entrance for the Beckett's access in this option.
The parking ramp would still be accessible and as is?
Correct.
Would there be retaining walls on this one as well?
There would not be retaining walls on this option.
Well, there would be along the, what we're trying to tie back down into grade.
Correct. Along Oregon-Jackson Street, there would be, but if we're talking about the access to the parking ramp, by that time, we're down close enough to existing grade where there would be.
Okay.
So, there's fewer retaining walls than there were in.
But there's still one block in the Beckett's and the Beckett's parking lot and the road, the bridge.
There'd be a little bit of a retaining wall along there.
Thank you.
I believe, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Perfect.
If they lose that access.
Yeah. I don't like the.
Alternative J1, and again, this is another carryover option from the study. We are looking at this going off-alignment with the portion of the bridge over the river, and especially the navigation or the bascule span. This, again, as mentioned, is a bascule option. The idea here was the lift span, while it may be only a small portion of the overall project, it's the portion that takes the longest to construct. We take two years in order to build a bascule span, so by doing the bascule span on-off-alignment, we don't impact traffic in the first year of construction. This is similar to what is being done, ongoing right now in Manash with Racine Street, where really, the first 12 months of construction didn't impact existing traffic. So, there are curves on both sides really tying back in to the existing roadway. We do have full grade separation of both Riverwalks with this option. The off-alignment alternatives, both J1 and the next one, J2, do involve either a closure or realignment of Division Street on it. So, we had some concern with the fact that we're off-alignment and coming back in, that if we didn't do something with Division Street, it would lead traffic potentially down that. The other thing I guess to mention on this, certainly, we are realigning Division and acquiring the chamber building, similar to Option C1, and having a new intersection with Marion and Division being combined. The question certainly came up, likely that would be a signalized intersection at the realigned location. Again, Beckett's access stays very close to the existing location, and the parking ramp stays very close to the existing location, since we are offset to the west.
You said this would require signalized intersection. Just out of curiosity, roundabout doesn't work in that location?
We didn't look at a roundabout there, to be honest, in looking at that, that's something with the grades, 4% coming down, I think would be an issue certainly at this location.
I think the proximity of that intersection to the lift bridge would also prohibit roundabout, and that would also require additional right-of-way acquisition, I would suspect, Bill, to be able to put one there.
It would in the proximity of the intersection itself, yes.
This is not, this is not a lift bridge, though, is it?
This is a lift bridge scenario.
This is a lift bridge, yes. Alternative J2, another carryover alternative, very similar to J1, so I won't reiterate the similar characteristics, but the difference here is that it does cul-de-sac Division Street on the east side of Jackson, so the Marion Road intersection remains unchanged, but Division Street is cul-de-sacked on the east side with this option. The last two alternatives we'll look at are new alternatives that were developed within the last several months. These are both high-level fixed bridge options. Again, when we reviewed some of the feedback that we got earlier in the study and also talking with city officials, there wasn't as much of an issue with the two-year construction window as we thought that there might be. So, one of the things we looked at was staying partially on alignment, but shifting a little bit to the west, such that we could maybe lessen the impacts to Beckett's and the city-center property, and still fit within right-of-way as much as possible through this area. So, again, this would be two-year impact to traffic in the area, high-level fixed bridge, 23-foot navigation clearance that we talked about previously, and again, does realign Division to intersect with Marion. Access to Beckett's and the parking ramp structure are similar to Alternative C1 in that they do come in from a cul-de-sac that outlets to Division Street. The one thing to mention, and we do have some parking statistics here, and you can see on the screen, we tried to show kind of removal of parking in the crossed-hatched kind of Magenta lines. There are impacts to parking both kind of in the north lot adjacent to the cul-de-sac as well as in the existing Beckett's property on the north side. Initially, there's a loss of six spots, but with reconfiguring the parking lot a little bit, we're actually able to gain one spot in this alternative. And then on the south side, along the Beckett's property, we initially lose 25 spots, but we do gain some with the reconfigured lot and actually limit that loss to 12 parking
Do all of these options assume the same speed? And if so, is there any slowing, any calming introduced in any of the alternatives?
All of them would have the same posted speed really as out there today with the 25 out there, so there's no difference in that whether it's a high-level fixed or a bascule bridge. The last alternative to look at is M2, and again, not going back through the same characteristics. This is very similar to M1, except for the access to Beckett's and the parking ramp, and similar to the kind of variations on the C alternates. The access here is directly to Jackson Street, but again, is seven to seven-and-a-half feet above existing grade. We're a little further offset, so it's probably a little better situation with the impacts, but again, there would be some retaining wall that would need to be constructed off of the driveway into the parking ramp, but also the offshoot that comes down into Beckett's. With this option, there's a little more impact to parking. On the north side of the parking ramp, we're looking at losing six spots. Oh, and I think I got some of the numbers wrong. Actually, we'll go back quick to M1. That's the problem with having reading glasses, no. The M1 alternate, actually, the parking on the north side loses 13 spots, but the reconfigured lot loses four. On the south side adjacent to Beckett's, we actually gained 19 spots with the M1 alternative. With the M2 alternative, here's on the north side where we lose six initially, but reconfiguring the lot, we could gain one. And then on the south, we lose 25 initially, but reconfiguring it, we would limit those losses to 12 spots. So, hopefully, that's clear, but certainly, M1 has less impact and actually, a little bit of benefit to impact with the parking for Beckett's. What we tried to do, and obviously, it's a lot to go through, but within our environmental document, tried to put everything in one table in looking at the alternatives and comparing them, really, on the local objectives that were part of the initial stakeholder group, but also looking at bridge ownership differences, the construction duration differences, and the relative cost differences on that. The options and alternatives that are shown in green are the new options. The alternatives in blue are the options that were carried over. So, just in one table, really, trying to assess and compare all the alternatives against, really, all the factors, and it does a pretty good job of laying things out. And again, there's not a lot of time tonight to go through, but certainly, look through it at your leisure.
What are some of the high environmental impacts? Looks like over half of them have that.
And I don't know if, Justin and all, if you can comment really on that?
Well, environmental, I guess that's more general, is Tom.
Justin, why don't you come up and join us, so the mics can pick you up?
Yeah, I got it, correct. Just wanted to see what all the categories are.
Certainly, footprint in the water is probably the greatest impact. Moveable span apparently has a much larger footprint.
Yeah, a lot of it is that with, in any of these options, we're going to be, a lot of it deals with the water. We're going to be in the water for a year, two years, so it's not necessarily long-term impact, but initially, there's an impact to build each of these structures in the water. As compared to the rehab, there's, you're not going to be in the water to rebuild in a rehab. There's also, environmental is a broad category as well, so you have, you know, real estate impacts as well. On any of these reconstruction options, there are going to be real estate impacts to, in all four corners. So, that's the main two things are, you know, impact to the Fox River and also the real estate impacts that are going to be needed along this corridor for any reconstruction.
The most popular slide, I'm sure that we'll cover. What the first bullet statement here, it talks about state funding rehabilitation or lowest-cost replacement structure. In general, what this means is that the state would fully participate in either a high-level fixed bridge option or rehabilitation. Any of the bascule bridge replacements in general are in the neighborhood of about $25 million, more expensive than any of the high-level fixed bridge options. So, the additional cost for a bascule bridge replacement would be the responsibility of the municipality, or the city of Oshkosh in this case. So, that would be looking at, I mean, obviously, that $25 million, again, that's a general number. These are very preliminary estimates, but that's ballparked, to give you an idea of what we'd be looking at for the additional cost for a bascule above a high-level fixed bridge option.
So, you fund mediums but not high?
Correct. Correct.
And where did that come from? Because that wasn't the issue five years ago. Is that a new destination from?
Again, it's a directed.
You're just a messenger. We don't shoot messengers. We snarl at them, though, but we don't shoot them. But that, when did that come up? Because that wasn't brought up.
That came really about right at the time that the study was suspended in late 2017. So, obviously, we, our study has been suspended, and we haven't been in active outreach until last summer.
Last year, yeah.
So, I mean.
You broke the news to me last year. I'm just doing it publicly, Bill, so we're good.
Yep.
But Bill, Tammy, we're cool with it.
The other thing, the second bullet gets into State Statute 8410, which basically states that any bridge on a local street or connecting highway transfers to local ownership when it is replaced. So, any of the eight replacement options do trigger jurisdictional transfer from the state to the city. If a rehabilitation option would move forward, the state maintains ownership until such time as it would be replaced. So, again, we talked about a 25-year life generally of a rehabilitation option, so then at that time, again, that 8410 statute.
Question on that, Bill, with the, we have other span bridges, if, we have other.
Bascule?
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for, yeah. The lift bridges, that's my term. The lift bridges are still going to be, the other ones are still going to be maintained by the state. How does that work with the bridge tenders? Because we have to have bridge tending responsibilities.
And that gets into the third bullet on there as well, when it talks about the city will assume ownership, or, excuse me, operation and maintenance cost of a new structure. We have had a lot of talks, even in the original study, the question came up with respect to what are annual maintenance costs of it. As we said, we can't anticipate future costs necessarily, but we can give historical costs. For 2021, the annual costs cover bridge tenders as well as some minor maintenance that was done, and it was roughly in a $150,000 range. A large portion of that is the bridge tender wages that go along with that. So, while we can't say what those costs would be going forward, a new bridge generally, at least for the maintenance part of it, would be less than a bridge that's up in years, but those bridge tenders costs would be fixed. The one thing to mention, and it's ongoing right now in the city of Oshkosh with all the lift bridges, is that the DOT is looking at implementing remote operations, which basically consolidates the bridge tenders to a single location and allows multiple lift bridges to be operated from that one location, which would be Wisconsin Street in the city of Oshkosh. There would be some cost sharing worked out. Details yet to be determined if remote operations are implemented, on how those bridge tenders wages would be shared.
That was really where I was going, because I knew the cost part. I knew the bad news. I was more the getting into the weeds on.
We'd have to go into an intergovernmental agreement, you know, like any SMA that we would go through for a construction project, we'd have to go through a similar process to define how those costs are being shared.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to hire our own bridge tender if it's already being done by the state.
Correct.
The other two bridges.
The other thing that's somewhat obvious, but is worth mentioning, is that with the high-level fixed, obviously, there's no opening, closing, no bridge tenders. So, really, your maintenance. So really, your maintenance costs under any of the high-level fixed bridge is minimal separate from obviously a regularly scheduled kind of deckwork on there, so...
Obviously, that's an important point for council to be set. That's going to be brand-new costs that are going to be added to us. I assume state transportation needs aren't going to increase with our maintenance responsibility, so just having fun with you.
I'd like to go back quick. You said that state would help fund like a medium but not a high cost?
What we would participate fully in is either a rehabilitation or any of the high-level fixed bridge options. So it's the lowest-cost replacement structure, which at this point, the estimates for the four high-level fixed bridge options are relatively close.
So say if we chose one of the more expensive ones, would the state kick in the money, the like amount for the lower cost? And then we add, it would be added?
It would be an additional roughly, again, roughly $25 million. And I know when we throw a number out there, everyone grabs onto that right away, but that's a rough general number as far as what we're looking at.
And that's just, it's just nice to know that you're not throwing us out there.
That's the difference?
That's the difference.
Okay.
What, what difference is there, if any, between the few feet between the medium and the high-level fixed as far as like ice issues with that higher elevation and wind in other cities?
Yeah, there shouldn't be any real significant issue from ice standpoint with the high-level fixed bridge option. Again, one thing we mentioned, and we brought some renderings here tonight as well, but the village of Winnicottie, we did build a high-level fixed bridge in 2018 that we opened there. Performed very well. Quite honestly, when we had our earlier study that was suspended in 2017, there was some maybe lack of trust in what the rendering showed at that time, because there was kind of image people had in their minds that the impact would be much more significant. I would encourage you, if you haven't, anyone, to go out to Winnicottie and take a look at that high-level fixed bridge. It's really enhanced, I would say, the landscape and the views in the community. And that's not my words, that's the city, the village official's words on it. So I know that that bridge project actually was put in for a national award and did winning notification for the, at least the Midwest portion of the country.
For the council members who are relatively new, I think, Mary, you might be the only one who was on the council at the time. Before it got suspended, we were planning some type of, you know, go take a look at what was going on in Winnicottie. I can say I've done some independent research and feather myself. And I would say that I would agree with Bill's statement, that I think it's, the impact is not as dramatic as I think was feared. And I know that five years ago, that was a big concern, and I think at that time, Bill, you said you really ought to go see what's in Winnicottie and see how it goes, so...
We have that, that real-life picture, I mean, that is much better than any rendering can represent. So it's, I would encourage you to go and take a look at that.
In comparison to that bridge, since that is the closest and it's a real-life example, it's a good example, our max, our height, you know, the, from waterline to bridge, how does it compare to Winnicottie's?
Very close. It's not the exact, certainly, but we based the Winnicottie on the Finn and Feather steamboat and Radkey barges that were out there. So it's within foot, a foot and a half of what we'd see in Oshkosh.
Because that was actually one, you hit on one of the businesses that weren't on the water community. Radkey has to get up and down the water for their, with their barges to do the lifts and different things that they do on the river and the lake, so making sure that they have navigation. And we also obviously have our own paddle boat that goes up and down, just making sure that that can clear that bridge.
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, this matches the Lake Buttermore causeway clearance?
Correct. The basis for it was the I-41 over Lake Buttermore.
That was one of my main concerns, was the navigation of the waterway and any, any impacts it had on restrictions of those who want to go down, you know, up and down the waterfront.
James, Ms. Nyford's not in this week, but she did have discussions with the representative for the folks who just bought the Jelwyn property. I don't think that they had any comments on the new M1 and M2 because that...
She expressed to me that they were in favor of a fixed bridge option. I don't remember which alternative they were looking at, but her, what she expressed to me is they were supportive of a fixed bridge, a high-level fixed bridge option.
Yeah, but with this push in to the west, I was...
Yeah, I don't remember exactly how in-depth they've gone with it. And obviously, you know, we've, we've got time yet, you know, she'll be back next week, and the public information meeting is, it's two, two weeks?
April 4th.
So, you know, we've certainly got time to make sure we connect with them and, you know, make sure that they're seeing all the latest and greatest information.
Yeah. Council want to be here that you're making a decision.
And just a couple of slides quick to finish up. Just in general, on schedule going forward, we are looking at kind of having a draft environmental document by summer of 2023, looking at environmental document approval in 2024, and then our final phase of engineering would move forward from that point, from then until construction. I do use the word potential real estate acquisition, starting in spring of 2025, depending on the alternative that's selected. Construction right now is looking to start in summer of 2028, and in general, I think most options are going to be close to a two-year construction window. We have talked briefly, but it's just mentioned, public involvement meeting on April 4th at 5:00 PM will be a virtual public meeting. Our website, which is the last slide as part of the presentation, does contain a live link to join that presentation. So it's as simple as going on the website, clicking on the link, and you'll be brought to that public meeting. And I guess with that, questions that we'd open it up for?
Rehabilitation of the current bridge, estimated 25 years roughly, but at some point, the state's going to tell us, we can't keep rehabbing this thing, we're just building you a new one and you're taking ownership, and that's just going to happen, whether it's in two decades or more or less, that's going to happen. Is it a fair guesstimate?
I'm not a bridge guy, but I would, I would say, that's generally, you're pushing it 25 years, but at that point, yes, I don't know that we could rehabilitate anything that would be 100 years.
Typically, the design life is 75. You stretch it maybe to 100, but anything beyond...
In terms of bridge life of our current bridges in this community, obviously, you did significant rehab in Congress. Ohio, Wisconsin's what, 10-ish, 15-ish?
15.
There we go. When we look out for some of our major capital things, the fire trucks are the biggest one we do, we have to stagger them. We can't afford to put them back-to-back or do them multi. Knowing now what the costs are and then what they're going to be in the very far future, how compacted are our potential needs down the, in terms of...
I see where you're heading with this, Matt. I think, you know, doing that scenario would put us very close to stacking up. I think Main Street would be the next one, and then Oshkosh Ave would be after that. I think if we push this 25 years, we'd be real close to stacking on top of Main Street, if I remember all the years correctly. Rob, I don't know if you know the dates on that one, but I vaguely remember that that would put us almost right on top of when Main Street would be looking at needing to have something major done.
Okay. Just trying to look as, making, you know, decisions now for what they're going to do to, who's ever running the show in, you know, in two decades here.
Have you seen communities that have as many bridges as we do go the route of closing a bridge? Or retiring a bridge?
And again, that I guess would be a question more for Oshkosh than it would be, I mean, for the state. I have not seen a similar situation where a bridge has been taken away.
But there are, are there a number of communities that have as many as we do within a...
I mean, Green Bay certainly does. Manaus has got two, but I mean, Green Bay is probably the most comparable in a downtown environment, and certainly, they haven't gotten rid of any. It's nice, certainly, when you look at having Wisconsin and Oregon, Jackson, and Main Street, if one bridge needs significant repairs, you've still got alternate options to cross the river in a downtown area.
And the other scenario too, annually, there are closures of these bridges for maintenance and inspections and, and things. So it's, you know, it's nice to, you know, be very close to get around another one, you know? Unlike, you know, the scenario in Winnicottie where it was, you know, almost an hour-long detour when you couldn't cross the river.
The one thing I will mention, I know we got a comment a little bit from emergency services back in the initial study, I mean, if you would have one option that is a fixed bridge option that doesn't open and close, certainly from an emergency response, it's something that they can always count on being open compared to a bridge potentially opening or closing.
And it's kind of in the middle.
So all of these are two years? I had in my head that some of these were only one year.
Construction is two years in all situations. The impacts to traffic can be limited to one year with a off-alignment option, I believe is J1 and J2.
So you don't consider M1 and M2 one of those?
Correct. Those are really partial offset. What we tried to do was more split the right-of-way.
You have closed.
To minimize impacts to Beckett's and the city center, but really, what we heard was given that you have Wisconsin and you have Main Street, limiting the construction impacts to one year wasn't as big of an issue from a local standpoint.
Obviously, this is a lot to digest here in, in one sitting. You know, we encourage, you know, if anyone has any more questions, you know, certainly the public information meeting on April 4th, but council, you know, if you have additional questions or thoughts, you know, you can feel free to reach out to Mark or myself, and we will coordinate, you know, if we don't have the answers, getting those answers from Bill and his team for you as well.
I think one of the things I'm going to need to hear, and this is one, I'd like staff to be the one relaying this, because us, we would get maybe seven different answers. But the impact that it has on the surrounding property owners, specifically Beckett's, is a key thing that we should know. But the parking, the access to a business or access to multiple businesses inside city center, I'd like staff to figure out where, where their thoughts are on these options and the impacts it possibly has to their operations.
As well as the co-op and the Brio and...
The surrounding.
Surrounding, yep.
I mean, no matter, no matter what alternative is selected, we'll work with them, you know, when we do our final design to accommodate, you know, as much as we can in their preferences toward, you know, different things, so...
Oh, yeah, and there's no doubt on that from, from, from me on that. Just in terms of us making a recommendation, we've got to make sure we hear from them in a, in a clear, unified...
And again, they were on our stakeholder committee for both...
I don't think we have to worry about Chris, we can handle it. Yeah, on the west side, it'll certainly be a disruption during construction, but post-construction, it's really going to be pretty comparable on the west side. The east side is going to be significantly different. So I think getting that input...
Absolutely.
Whether you agree or disagree with whatever that might be, and I don't know, it seems you and I can talk, but I wasn't at all the stakeholder meetings, so...
Yeah, like I said, they were on the stakeholder meeting, but I'm, you know, I'm sure, you know, some of these scenarios, you know, there may be some tweaks, fine-tuning, you know? It's certainly, I think, worth another conversation.
I will tell council that back in 2017, one of the concerns was expressed by the owners of the Jelwyn site, and that was the Morgan Partners, and they were concerned. And I think it was over the uncertainty, but now that the potential development and the project are in alignment, there, we're getting, even though we're not being told who these people are, we're getting input from their representative, and that's been helpful, because it's, sometimes you don't always get that alignment, but we got a pretty good alignment of timing right now, which hopefully helps, so we're getting the input that they like the...
One of the fixed alternatives, I just don't know which one.
What's the significance of the green versus the blue on the table?
The green is really just the three new alternatives that were developed in the last six months, and the others carried over from when the study was suspended.
I will say all these materials are on the project website, so you can really zoom in, they're all PDFs, so...
Perfect.
All the alternatives are there, too, if you really want to zoom in to a certain spot. It's a little bit easier to see that way.
And I believe some of this is on the city's website and hot topics already as well.
Those, and those images that we're seeing on the big boards here, are those included in?
Those are not in the website now, but we certainly can load them.
I think it'd be helpful, I think, because previously, that was one of the concerns, like what is this monstrosity of the wall going to look like? It's not that bad. It's a wall, but it's, it's not that imposing comparative to what I think people thought it might be.
Right.
I think to one of your points before.
One of the interesting things with, over in Winnicottie, even though there's an obstruction, the obstruction is now high enough that you can actually see through it. So for example, from the Finn and Feather, you can see across, diagonally across the river to the opposite side. And that's, I think there was a concern that it would just be blocking virtually everything, and it actually kind of opened it up a little bit. That's just my opinion on it, but I encourage you to go do your own independent research.
With the potential real estate impact with projects where perhaps you're adding, you know, additional concrete and pervious surface, of course, at either end, are other projects offsetting some of that, I guess, additional concrete with any kind of allocated green space to make up for those impacts?
There's nothing, I mean, that's, there's an option under some of them, I think there's an opportunity maybe for a little green space out there, and I'm trying to think in the southeast corner, say, of the realigned intersection with Marion and Division. On some of the options, there's nothing specifically that's common to all of the alternatives with that. But certainly, the one thing I'll mention, there used to be a program we had, I mean, which was called CSD or Community Sensitive Design. That program doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, okay. I thought that's, I couldn't remember the name of it, yeah.
Yeah, which is why I thought it may have been, it's probably been five years roughly that that program went away. So certainly, the local community can put local money toward aesthetic features over and above what the project would involve, but there is no longer any special federal and state money that can be allocated for that.
There's definitely some areas around, you know, where we're showing like a cul-de-sac or the realigned intersection where you, there will be the opportunity to determine whether that's future parking or whether that's future green space or what goes in those areas. I mean, that's, that's definitely part of final design determination.
And again, it's a local decision, but I can tell you, I mean, there are some relatively low-cost things that could be done to bridges and retaining walls if, if the local community wants to put a little money towards that. Manaus did make a decision to invest some local money toward some aesthetic features on their project. That'll be open later this fall, and certainly, that opportunity is there, but there's not federal-state dollars for that. We would certainly, after we get an improvement alternative selected, work closely with the city officials on any desires that they want in that regard. Again, contact information's on the last slide, the website's on the last slide, and as Lindsay mentioned, the website does have all the alternatives on there and as well as the main, so I encourage you to check that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
This local government meeting is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand.